Good afternoon, colleagues. Welcome back. Thank you for your patience as we worked out some of our technical issues with our AV system. So thank you to the AV crew as well. We left off on second reading again, amended bill number 97-37COR. Senator Sabina Perez had introduced her amendment, but we've received some calls during the break as to, they were very confused as to where we cut off. So if you don't mind, Senator, can you just restate your amendment before we begin discussion on that amendment?
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the amendment that I'm proffering states, it's on page two, line seven to 21, "The Guam Preservation Trust continues to preserve and protect our island's historic sites, culture, and perspectives for the benefit of our people of Guam and our future. Through this measure, granting authority to the government of Guam to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Guam Preservation Trust relating to the Inalahan Baptist Church ensures GPT's commitment to their continued efforts to restore, reconstruct, and rehabilitate its front façade structure while still," it should say retaining, but it says "remaining its historical essence and venue for religious and fellowship activities. Eless Latorre in Guahan intends to authorize the government of Guam to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Guam Preservation Trust relating to Lot 106-1, Block 12, formerly known as Inalahan Baptist Church Municipalities of Inalahan, Guam for the purpose of stabilizing and restoring its historical structure that has been a public concern for its hazardous state and comprising the safety and well-being of local residents of the visitors of Inalahan Village." So to recap, the purpose of this amendment is to ensure that the real property is not transferred out of the government of Guam, which has the impact of lowering the debt ceiling, but it also accomplishes this partnership, this public partnership, our public government partnership, to restore and rehabilitate historic properties under the sponsorship of Guam Preservation Trust, who has had a track record of doing such throughout our island. There are many facilities that have been renovated and rehabilitated successfully. And I think it's really critical that we put it in capable hands because restoration is definitely a specialized field. And so what we think is perfectly normal in restoring our properties is very different when it comes to historic properties, and it requires that very fine attention. And so, yeah, I ask, I think, yeah, basically, it's a win-win situation at this point. So I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment to the intent of the bill, is there any, Senators Long and Senior recognized?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have an amendment to that amendment. And my comments and my amendment is to focus exactly what I've stated yesterday was to focus on ensuring that the Inalahan Baptist Church falls under the jurisdiction of the Inalahan Mayor's Municipal Planning Council. And my amendment would be where the amendment says there that granting jurisdiction, authority, keeping the jurisdiction authority of the Inalahan Baptist Church to the Inalahan Municipal Planning Council. And a memorandum of agreement between the Inalahan Municipal Planning Council and the GPT will ensure GPT's commitment to their continued efforts to restore, reconstruct, rehabilitate its front facade or structure while still retaining, not remaining, but retaining its historical essence and venue for religious and fellowship activities. And then going further down, as she identifies and intends to transfer or intends to authorize Governor Guam to enter a memorandum of agreement, my amendment is to identify that the municipal planning, as we read along, the list through and go on further intends to transfer Lot 106-1, Block 12, formerly known as the Inalahan Baptist Church Municipalities of Inalahan, Guam, from Nevis Flores Memorial Library, Governor Guam, to the Inalahan Municipal Planning Council. Keeping in mind, going to the council still maintains government, except it's very specific. It's not in general. And I want to bring back the issue that we're concerned, it's Inalahan. Let Inalahan do it. Let Inalahan come up with a, do the memorandum of agreement with Guam Preservation Trust. And let's put the onus on Inalahan to make sure, and they've been successful. We all travel down south. They're the only ones that's got the markings saying 35 miles an hour. We don't need to worry about public workers putting up signs. They're the only ones that are saying, keep Inalahan clean, put your trash where it needs to go. They're the only ones that have been pursuing all restoration and even restoring all their sites. And that, with that, I'd like to pursue that Inalahan has full control and they will set up the memorandum of agreement. And that's my amendment. And it is, it is, it's been circulated among the colleagues. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment to the amendments, is there anyone I'd like to speak? Senator Titegui, you're recognized.
Sujas Masni, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of this amendment. You know, there were some concerns yesterday was brought up about the ability for the mayor to oversee, you know, the work that's being done. Is he going to do it right? Is it going to be done at all? I mean, there's, that's a good question. So I made sure, I made a phone call last night, you know, to hear from the Inalahan mayor himself and asked him, if you were to have this under your jurisdiction, and would you sign a memorandum of understanding between, are you willing to sign an MOU between agreement between Guam Preservation Trust and yourself, or will you follow through on it? Because we've seen other projects that have been brought up. For instance, the elementary school in Humatec that still has yet, you know, to start, and it's this body that even provided funding for that project, but it still hasn't started. Do we have confidence in the mayor of Inalahan? Absolutely. He's constantly getting praises. He's constantly getting awards for being the best village on Guam. People are, can't stop talking how wonderful Inalahan is and all the work he's done. And, you know, this mayor, by the way, started cleaning up this village even before he became a mayor of Inalahan. So can we trust an individual to make sure that this village project is going to see the time of day and it's actually going to get started? Because right now, it's crumbling. So I stand in full support. I think it should stay with them because there's anybody who has more vested interest in this Baptist church is the people of Inalahan and the municipal council. So I stand in full support of this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sujas Masni, Senator Titegui. On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Blasi, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, so that I can fully understand the amendment to the amendment, there, if you look at the amendment to the amendment and compare it to the amendment, there's language in here that's different, very, very different. Let me go to the third line. In the amendment, it says, "Through this measure, granting and striking out jurisdiction authority to..." But in the amendment to the amendment, "Through this measure, granting jurisdiction authority." If it's going to be an amendment to the amendment, I think that the language has to be consistent with the amendment.
Let's take a short recess.
We're back from recess. We are again having some serious technical difficulties that requires our audio to work on this overnight. So my apologies to all those who are watching and to my colleagues. We are going to have to recess until tomorrow at 9:30, hoping that everything will be in line by then. Okay? Recess again. Still on the same bill, we'll recess until 9:30 tomorrow. Thank you.